All right, being seven o'clock, I'll call the meeting of the common council to order. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, and every justice for all.
It could have been quite a bit of digging if you would have started.
Clerk, roll call has been taken? Looking for a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved, second.
Motion's been made by Barrington, seconded by O'Connell. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Approval of December 8th, 2020 council minutes? Looking for a motion?
So moved, second.
Motion's been made by Herter, seconded by Pinch. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Authorization to pay bills, Mr. Moroc.
Thank you, Your Honor. Move we pay bills in amount of eight hundred two thousand six hundred thirty-four dollars seventy-four cents.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to pay bills in eight hundred and two thousand dollars six hundred and thirty-four cents. Excuse me. Backed up. Eight hundred and two thousand six hundred and thirty-four dollars and seventy-four cents. Please cast your ballots.
Turned on. Let me turn it on.
We gotta go to vote.
One more.
One more.
Oops, sorry. Sorry.
Okay.
Sorry.
Motion carried by all. Move on to public comment. Hearing none, we'll keep moving on. Standing and special committees, we'll start with Board of Public Works, Mr. Barrington.
Thank you. Board of Public Works, met on January 4th, 4:30 PM. Called to order. The motion carried by all. The first item was wastewater treatment facility update. We reviewed that, looked at the things, there was no questions or concerns, everything seemed to be working good. The next item was review and ordinance designating two-hour parking in the city parking lot at 210 Lincoln Court. New London Police Department has received complaints from local businesses of cars parking exceeding hours in the city park allotted 210 Lincoln Court. Currently, the lot allows for twenty-four hour parking. These businesses state that their patrons cannot park close enough to their businesses as the lot is full from area tenants parking all day during business hours. Chief Slieder recommended designating the south side stalls in the parking lot as two-hour parking and try to rotate traffic more often in this lot. Motion made and seconded to amend section 7.07B of the municipal code to include the south side parking stalls at 210 Lincoln Court to limit parking in those stalls to two hours between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday. Motion carried by all. That'll be brought to council tonight. Next, we reviewed and made a recommendation on the traffic analysis on County X, Wapaka County, by the Wapaka County Highway Department. At a previous meeting, the board reviewed traffic data taken on County Highway X from the Wapaka County Highway Department. The traffic survey showed no unusual amount of accidents or excessive speeding as most travelers are driving at or below the current speed limit. After discussion, the committee still felt from the amount of traffic on this road, especially during season seasons with high boat traffic, that the city should take a proactive approach and reduce the speed limit from thirty-five to twenty-five miles an hour. Motion made and seconded to request the highway department to continue efforts to fulfill the city's original request to reduce the speed limit from thirty-five to twenty-five. Motion carried by all. The next was a discussion on a crosswalk or additional lighting by the New London School District Bus Garage. Previous discussions took place regarding the installation of additional street lighting and/or pedestrian crosswalk safety signals or signage by the New London School District Bus Garage. This is a safety concern as bus drivers park across the street and cross Highway X to the school bus garage. The committee suggested having a conversation with the New London School District to get their input on the situation. No motion was made at this time. Next, recommend to council a preliminary assessment resolution for sanitary laterals along Warner Allen Street. Hirth provided a preliminary assessment resolution that would need to be passed in order to assess property owners for any sanitary lateral or water lateral improvements as needed for the upcoming Warner Allen Boulevard reconstruction project. This would be the first step in several requirements needed for assessing the property owners. Motion made and seconded that the council approve the preliminary assessment resolution for the upcoming Warner Allen Street construction project. Motion was carried by all. The next, discuss and possibly act on options for brush disposal. Options are being researched on how to dispose of brush that is collected. Mr. Hirth explained in the past, the city has been able to dispose of brush for free as it was used for biofuel. This is no longer an option in the current market. One option is to work with a local business on a yearly agreement in which the city could dump brush as it was collected and the contractor would be responsible for disposing of it. Staff will continue this research, no motion made at this time. The director's memo was included and reviewed by the committee. Crews have been focusing on tree trimming, stump grinding, snow plowing. Mr. Hirth will have a conversation with the street superintendent regarding some snow plowing concerns addressed by the committee. Service anniversary report. Don Gudrow, street operator, has completed fifteen years of service as of December 5th. Future agenda items will be brush options. That's all I have tonight. I recommend the council to adopt an ordinance amending section 7.07B to designate two-hour parking in the south side stalls at 210 Lincoln Court. This is the first reading.
Second. Motion's been made by Mike Barrington, seconded by Mr. Herter. To adopt an ordinance amending section 7.07B to designate two-hour parking in the south side stall at 210 Lincoln Court. First reading. Please cast your ballots. Motion carried by all.
Next, I move to adopt a preliminary assessment resolution to assess for sanitary and water lateral improvements on Warner Allen Boulevard.
Motion made by Barrington, seconded by Mr. Herter. To adopt a preliminary assessment resolution to access for sanitary and water lateral improvements on Warner Allen Boulevard. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots.
One more time, Fred.
Fred Zog? And Dennis Herter? Cast your ballot, please. Motion carried by all.
Next, I move to adopt an ordinance to install stop signs at designated intersections along Lawrence Street. This is the second reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by Zog. To adopt ordinance to install stop sign at designated intersections along Lawrence Street. Second reading. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Ten zero, motion pass.
And that is all I have tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Barrington. Moving on to finance and personnel, Mr. Moroc.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Finance and Personnel Committee met on Wednesday, January 6th, at 4:30 PM in the council chambers and via Zoom. There was no public comment. A citizen public participation meeting on community development block grant program funds was held. Judy Ratkey, Finance Director, led a public participation hearing regarding the loan program the city intends on applying for. Items discussed included introduction and purpose of the hearing, identification of total potential funds, eligible activities, a presentation identifying the community development needs, identification of any community needs by the public, presentation of activities proposed by the application, including the street mill and overlay project on Lima, Lyons, and Avon Streets, and the ADA accessible path and bathroom remodel. A statement identifying that no residential displacement or acquisition of land is intended for either project. Citizen input questions regarding proposed and other community development block grant activities. Then, a motion was made by Barrington and seconded by Dorsey to recommend a council authorization of a resolution to submit the community development block grant street project application. Motion carried, seven zero. Motion was then made by Fache, seconded by Barrington, to recommend a council authorization of a resolution to submit the community development block grant ADA projects application. Motion carried, seven zero. Finance Director Ratkey then reviewed the monthly financial reports. The financial directory report was discussed. City Administrator Hirth updated the committee on the hiring process for the building inspector and the city clerk. There was no public input and the meeting adjourned at 5:21 PM. The next regularly scheduled finance meeting will be held in the council chambers on Wednesday, February 3rd at 4:30 PM. Then I would move that we approve a resolution authorizing staff to submit a community development block grant street projects application.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by Mr. O'Connell to approve a resolution authorizing staff to submit a CD BG street projects application. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Tom?
One more time, Tom.
Is it going?
There you go. Motion carried, ten zero.
I move that we approve a resolution authoring staff to submit a community development block grant ADA projects application.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by Mr. Barrington to approve a resolution authorizing staff to submit a CD BG ADA projects application. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. And motion carried, ten zero.
Then I move we approve the license list for January's presented.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded by Mr. Herter. For the license list? Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. And motion carried, ten zero.
And so I have your Finance and Personnel, Your Honor.
Thank you, Ms. Moroc. Move on to Parks and Recreation, Mr. Beesaw.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Parks and Rec Committee met on Tuesday, January 5th, at 4:45. The agenda was moved to approved, seconded by all. Motion was carried. Public comment relevant to items on the agenda, there was none presented. Consider a request from Cindy Bungart to transfer a portion of land from the River Park Trail to her parcel at 813 West Wolf River Avenue. Cindy Bungart is interested in renovating her property at 813 West Wolf River Avenue. To do so, she was looking at installing a retaining wall around her building, raise the elevation, and bring the building out of floodplain. The city owns a five-foot wide section of property on the northeast corner that she claims was mistakenly surveyed away from her property, and she is requesting for the city to deed it back to her. Chad Harth explained that after researching the request, it was found that the city's property is tied to a Land and Water Conservation Fund grant in which the city agreed not to sell, lease, assign, or mortgage a premises without prior written approval of the Secretaries of the Department of Natural Resources and the Department of Interior. Herter moved, seconded by Fache, to authorize staff and city attorney to petition to the Wisconsin DNR and the Department of Interior permission to transfer the five-foot section of land in question from the city to the property at 813 West Wolf River Avenue. Motion was carried by all. That'll be brought to council. Consider a request from Cindy Bungart to modify the trail easement at 813 West Wolf River Avenue. The city has a fifteen-foot easement on the north side of Bungart's property for a pedestrian trail. The existing building is about fifteen feet from the river's edge. So the easement basically includes the entire property from the building to the river's edge. Bungart is requesting to reduce the easement width so that she can place the proposed retaining wall on the north side of her property up to the trail's south edge. Fache moved, seconded by Herter, that council consider the request to reduce the existing trail easement at 813 West Wolf River Avenue to accommodate a retaining wall on the north side of the property. The motion was carried by all and we brought to council. Director's memo report, service anniversary reports. Robin Van Duser, park gardener and lifeguard, completed seven years of service December 5th. Laurie Schneider, senior center manager, completed two years of service December 26th. Committee members report none presented. Future agenda items, bike trails, salt, Flora Hills Cemetery. Herter moved to adjourn, seconded by Fache. Meeting was adjourned at 5:41. Motion was carried by all. I would look for a recommendation to consider a request from Cindy Bungart to transfer a portion of her land from River Trail Park to her parcel at 813 West Wolf River Avenue.
Second. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by Mr. Zog to authorize staff and the city attorney to investigate and file a petition with the state and federal agencies to transfer a five-foot section of land at River Trail Park to 1813 West Wolf River Ave...
Eight thirteen.
Eight thirteen, my... Excuse me. Eight thirteen West Wolf River Ave. Yes, Mr. Barrington.
This is pending approval from those involved, DNR and management.
Yes, this is granting them to work towards that, yeah.
Work towards...
Correct. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried, ten zero.
And then I would ask council to consider a request from Cindy Bungart to modify the trail easement at 813 West Wolf River Avenue.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by Zog to authorize the city attorney to negotiate and the mayor to execute the reduction of an existing trail and easement width at 815 West Wolf River Avenue. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes, eight two.
That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Beesaw. Continue on to Planning Commission, Mr. Beesaw, you're up again.
Hey. The December Planning Commission meeting met on Thursday, December 17th. Motion by a mayor, seconded by Steingraber, to adopt the agenda. Motion was carried by all. Approval of the November 19th, 2020 Planning Commission minutes. Motion by Gabbert, seconded by Bassett, to approve the November 19th, 2020 meeting minutes as presented. Motion carried by all. Request a variance for sign... View, a request for sign variances for Valley Family Medicine. Valley Family Medicine is requesting a variance to the zoning code to keep an existing business sign in the right-of-way. This topic was carried over from the November Planning Commission meeting where members requested additional information at that time. Administrator Chad Harth reported that after survey investigation, it appears that the existing sign is fully in the right-of-way. Secondly, Chad Harth asked the city attorney and city insurance carrier if there was any liability to the city if a private sign is hit in the right-of-way. The city's insurance carrier recommended removing the sign from the right-of-way if it is in violation of zoning code. But depending on the circumstances, if a variance is granted, a waiver agreement should be signed and the insurance placed on the sign covering the city and transferring any risk for potential claims. Chad Harth reported that staff could not find a sign permit authorizing placement of the original sign. After discussion, the commission felt that it is not in the city's best interest to approve the variance request. Motion by Bassett, seconded by Walbrook, to deny the variance request to allow the existing sign to remain in the right-of-way. Motion is carried by all. Reviewing request for a sign variance, Thrivant Financial. Thrivant Financial submitted an application for a sign permit to replace their existing business sign. It was determined that their existing sign was in the right-of-way in front of their business. Administrator Chad Harth noted in this application the business does not have any private property for frontage as the city's right-of-way goes right up to the building. So there is no opportunity for the business to place a sign in front of their building but outside the right-of-way. The existing sign does have an approved permit. However, the original application stated that the sign would not be placed in the right-of-way. Travis Klon and Jess Fenske from Thrivant Financial stated that they would add the city to their property insurance policy to ensure the city was covered if the sign was involved in an accident claim. The commission noted that the existing right-of-way at that intersection is fairly large and suggests to consider reducing the right-of-way to allow the business sign to be placed on private property. Chad Harth will investigate the feasibility of reducing the right-of-way at that location to accommodate a private business sign. No motion was made at this time on this item. Reviewing variance request for the reduction of the fifteen-foot floodplain protection elevation distance at 813 West Wolf River Avenue. Cindy Bungart recently requested the property at 813 West Wolf River Avenue and would like to update the building. Facility's elevation is currently in the floodplain which imposes restrictions on the amount of improvements that can be done to the facility. Bungart is interested in bringing the facility out of the floodplain so she can make substantial improvements to the building. One of the requirements is to raise the landscaping around the facility to be one foot above flood protection elevation and an area of fifteen feet around the facility. The current size of the lot, along with the close proximity of the building to the property lot lines and to the city's pedestrian trail, does not allow for Bungart to raise the landscaping on her property around the building to required fifteen feet. Bungart contacted the Wisconsin DNR and found that if the city would allow the reduction of the fifteen-foot zone, the DNR would also support that reduction. Bungart presented a site plan proposed to replace a retaining wall near the boundaries of the property and up to the paved portion of the city's trail. Chad Harth pointed out that the current easement for the trail allows for a fifteen-foot wide width for the trail and staff needs to measure the site to review what that distance would look like in relation to proposed retaining wall. Commission members requested additional information from Bungart, including information on the type of compliance fill, engineering specifications on the retaining wall, with a cross-section site plan and letters from the neighboring properties stating that they understand and do not object to the retaining wall being installed near the property lines. No motion was made at this time on this item. Review a zoning request change at 813 West Wolf River Avenue. This item was related to the previous discussion at the meeting Bungart requested to pass on this topic until the variance on the flood protection elevation can be determined. No motion was made on this item at this time. Approve a zoning ordinance for newly annexed property at N-3819 County Trunk T, Cindy Schultz. The property at N-3818 County Trunk T was recently annexed to the city and the parcel needs to be zoned. An ordinance was presented designating the parcel to be zoned R1, which was recommended in the city's comprehensive plan, preferred land use map. Motion by Bassett, seconded by Gabbert, to recommend that council consider approving the ordinance zoning the property at N-3819 County Trunk T as R1 single-family residential. Motion carried by all. Update on planning issues. The Economic Development Committee is working on reviewing some developer proposals for the downtown riverfront property. The next Economic Development Committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, January 26th, 2020. And that should be 2021. And Planning Commission members were invited to attend if they wanted to keep up with the development. Chad Harth reported that reviews for the next building inspector zoning administrator underway. Agenda items for future meetings include Wolf River Art League murals, request a review of variance for the reduction of the fifteen-foot floodplain protection elevation distance at 813 West Wolf River Avenue. Reviewing next... Reviewing request for a sign variance at Thrivant Financial. Review next meeting date. Chad Harth asked the commission to consider moving up to January meeting date as a developer is requesting a site plan review in the middle of January. The commission agreed to hold the next meeting on January 14th, 2021. Meeting was adjourned at 6:27. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Any motions to be made?
Just the one, huh?
Yep.
We would look for approval of a zone ordinance designating the property at N-3819 County Highway T, formerly Town of Hortonia.
Second.
Motion made and seconded by Ms. Dean. Approve a zoning ordinance designating the property at N-3819 County Highway T, formerly Town of Hortonia, 1715 and 1719 Mill Street, City of New London, as R1 single-family resident. First reading. Any further discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried, ten zero.
That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Barrington. Moving on to Economic Development Committee, Mr. Moroc.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Economic Development Committee met on Tuesday, December 15th, at 4:30 PM in the New London City Council chambers and via Zoom. The November 17th, 2020 minutes were approved. Two development firms provided presentations on consensual designs for the downtown riverfront property. Randy Retzloff, a developer who owns several apartment units currently in New London, provided two site plan options, including one with seven buildings and one with eight buildings. Each building would have eight units in them, so fifty-six to sixty-four total apartment homes. Depending on when design, engineering, and permitting can be completed, Retzloff stated he would be interested in starting construction in the spring of 2021 and it would take one and a half to two years to complete his plan. Jackie Miller, business development manager with SC Zabruderski, led a presentation which included a site plan proposal with eight buildings, including a unit mix of three different building styles for the site. The proposal would include forty-four total apartment homes. Planning would begin in 2021 with construction starting in 2022. The project would be completed in the fall of 2023. The committee thanked both developers for their interest in creating proposals for the site. Administrator Hirth will put together some additional questions for each developer to answer and come up with a matrix for the committee to review at the next meeting. Kapitsky presented the results of the first round... At the time of the meeting, thirty responses were received. Some of the takeaway points included sixty-five percent of the respondents stated they are not at risk of any employee layoffs at this time, whereas eleven responded stating that they were at risk of laying off some employees due to the pandemic. If business disruption continues, one business is at risk of closing within one to two months, two businesses within three to five, four businesses in over five months, and seventy-eight percent of the respondents stated that the closure is not a concern at this time. The largest concern for most respondents moving forward was the risk of losing work and customer traffic to their business. When asked what type of resources would be most helpful in the future, the most requested response was information on financial resources. Kapitsky and Hearth will work together to send out another request for those who did not fill out the survey to see if more responses can be captured. For the past few years, the city has hired a consultant to manage video and digital marketing on social media promoting city services. Hearth proposed allowing the current contract with a consultant to expire at the end of 2020 and managing those advertisement efforts with the talents of the city's new video producer, Casey Zimple. One benefit of organizing advertisements in-house is that the city can release a variety and more relative content on a quicker timeline. Has been moved, seconded by Kapitsky, to allow the current advertising contract with Bill Zeiner LLC to expire on 12/31/2020 with the intent of being digital marketing efforts with in-house staff. Motion carried by all. Kapitsky's business report included the Democratic and Republican Parties closing operations following the presidential election, the opening of a new alternative church called Blue Gorilla Lounge at 309 North Water Street, and a new specialty boutique called Born Born at 1923 North Shawno Street. Hearth provided a progress report on the status of working with Midwest Properties LLP and their plans to develop in the northeast Business Park. Under public input, Josh Wolt provided his opinion on how to move forward with choosing a developer for the downtown riverfront property site, including going to some of their previous developments. The next committee meeting will be scheduled for January 26th at four thirty PM, and the meeting adjourned at five fifty-six PM. You also have copies of the Wapaka County Economic Development Corporation monthly report for December 2020. That's all I have for Economic Development, Your Honor.
Thank you, Ms. Morat. Continuing on, we move on to the minutes and reports. They will stand as red as they're in your council packets. And moving right along to reports of officers and recent events announcements to the public. Start off with the mayor's report. I'd like to welcome everyone back from the new year. With that, I'd like to lead out with this. With our nation at unrest and during these trying times of the pandemic and transition of our nation's leaders, I'd like to ask that the residents of New London to please take a deep breath and exercise civility amongst each other over the next few weeks. I'd also like to say thank you to Mr. Lund Cooley for his time and dedication to the city of New London while serving on the Police and Fire Commission for the past fifteen years. I wish him well and his plans for future retirement. With that said, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Corey Kemful to the Police and Fire Commission for a term to expire in May of 2022. Let me get a second.
So, a second.
Mr. Morat, seconds. Any further discussion on that one? Please cast your ballots. Motion carried by all. I'd also like to add to please mark to your calendars for the special joint meeting of a Common Council and Economic Development Committee on January 26th at four thirty PM to discuss the proposed two developers for the Wolf River Front project. That'll be a joint meeting. And also, I am finalizing plans to have a bull session with the Common Council in the near future. This will include discussion of council members' self-evaluation and to discuss, discuss, and develop a guide to better assist newly-elected aldermen. Mr. Morat, do you have anything to add to that?
Yes, I do. You have in front of you a page of, uh, that I kind of put together, start putting together of ideas. We're probably gonna have three or four new aldermen coming in in April, and so to help them get started, uh, these are some of the things I think that they should be, become aware of and so forth. So I start jotting down some ideas. I would ask you to add to those and expand them and come up with your own ideas on things that you think an alderperson should know coming into the job. So, for example, uh, some of these things, I think we might be looking at bringing in some outside help or, uh, experts or whatever. For example, Robert's rules. In the past, uh, we have brought in, uh, somebody from Fox Valley Tech, for example, to talk about Robert's rules, um, computer, learning, uh, how to use a computer, what's out there, that type of thing. May have Missy Kepin involved in, uh, training and that type of thing. So anyway, again, I would appreciate you, uh, adding your ideas here, things that you feel a new alderperson should know in order to do a good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morat. And again, that'll lead out in the next week or two. That is all that I, all that I have, and we'll move on to the utility manager, Mr. Basset.
Thank you, Your Honor. On December 10th and 11th, electric crews worked on Wolf River Avenue by the waters to build a new setting for that gazebo and removed two phases going across the road. On December 12th, water crews repaired a water leak at 114 East Laura Street. Electric crews worked on Wolf River Avenue by John's Bar to replace a bad pole with Elm Star on December 16th. They also replaced overhead copper and downsized a transformer. Electric crews found the setting by Ort Trucking broke off. They replaced that pole on December 18th that was not broke by the contractors doing the force main work. Uh, I attended the WPPI Board of Directors meeting via Zoom on December 18th also. Water crews assisted municipal well on the process of pulling well number five at Douglas Street for scheduled maintenance and inspection on December 21st. Uh, we also had Great Lakes Roofing come and seal the roof at the utilities. We had a scheduled outage for Perfect Seal on December 24th, and we had another scheduled outage for Amcor on December 30th. They replaced several of their poles and some underground wires for one of their services. The water department had a main break on 603 East Washington Street on December 30th. Water crews made that repair themselves, and on January 3rd, we had another main break on Lawrence and Law Street. We also made that repair on January 4th. Electric crews have started our seasonal tree trimming around the power lines, and we hired two apprentices for the new line crew. They started December 28th. It is, uh, Jack Orshide and Carson Schramm. Uh, the utility received twelve hundred pounds of food donated to the community cupboard for its light giveaway. That food fed approximately a hundred and eighty-five families. And I'd also like to recognize Andy Chandler for eight years of service this month with the utilities. That's all I have, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Basset. Move on to Chief of Police, Mr. Schlitter.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, I'd like to thank Lund Cooley for his fifteen years dedication to the New London Police and Fire Commission. And then I would just like to reach out to our community. I know we're in tough times right now. Like the mayor says, it's time to take a deep breath. Um, you know, we're starting to see a few things out there, some flags that are probably inappropriate being flown and stuff like that. Uh, we will address that, we'll deal with them. Uh, but I just ask the community to use common sense. Remember, we got kids walking back and forth to school. Let's be respectful to each other, and let's get through this. Let's get through it as a community. Uh, you know, New London's been existence for what, a hundred and seventy-five plus years, and it's been a great community to grow up in, to live in, and let's keep it that way. Let's work together. Let's not fight each other. So, I just ask that we, we do, respectful to everyone. Uh, we will go out and we'll do our job. Uh, also, as far as community goes, we've always reached out to the community when we need assistance, and if the community does see something or suspects something coming up here in the near future, if you become suspicious, see something suspicious on Facebook, please contact us. Let us take a look into it, just make sure that there is nothing credible to it, and we'll go from there. So, let's stay strong in New London and, uh, work together. Thank you much.
Thank you, Chief. Move on to the Director of Public Services and City Administrator, Mr. Chad Hearth.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, just want to let everybody know that there's still more winter fun to be had. Um, if you haven't seen it already, we do have our winter activity guides still online. There are still programs available. Um, there's still, um, fun art classes, um, open gym, and lots of green senior programming. A lot of it has been, um, planned with social distancing and COVID-related considerations in mind, so check it out online or call us in the off, or contact us in the office if you need a copy. Uh, along those same lines with, uh, winter recreation venues, the sled hill at, uh, the wastewater treatment plant is still open. Um, it's getting a little patchy. I was just out there myself with, uh, my daughter, and, um, it's quick, it's getting patchy. We could use some snow, you have to, to put another layer on it, but it's still open for the time being. Um, we're also going to be, hopefully, if we get some more frost in the ground, um, we want to start working on some ice rinks. We definitely need a good chunk of frost in the ground, because once we start flooding them, it does suck that frost out, and if it sucks too much of the frost out, we can start losing water. So, um, we don't have liners down for our ice rinks, so if we get some more frost in the ground, we'll definitely start working on those ice rinks. Just check us out online, and we'll let you know when those venues are open. Um, if you have a Christmas tree and you want us to pick it up off your curb, give us a call in the office, in the Public Works Office, 92-8503, and let us know your address. That just saves us time instead of us running all over the town looking for a Christmas tree. So if you do have a Christmas tree, we'll be happy to pick it up. Just call us up, let us know, and then we can go directly and grab that. Um, a project coming up in the near future, we've been notified by We Energies, they are planning a major gas main replacement project on Cardinal Street from Robin to Cameron. So it's gonna be replacing the main, and it looks by the, the plans that they sent us, it'd be changing about, uh, a lot of the laterals supplying those houses. They should be notifying those residents directly who are gonna be affected by that, um, but we want to let everybody else know, whoever, who just drives through that area, there's gonna be construction starting, and they anticipate starting within a month. So, uh, just be on the lookout for that. Again, that's Cardinal Street from Robin to Cameron. And then lastly, I know in the Planning Commission minutes, we talked about having an early Planning Commission meeting, actually, on this Thursday. Um, the developer we were working with didn't get their things done, um, as quickly as they needed to. We will have the Planning Commission meeting on its regularly scheduled date on January 28th. So I know in the minutes said we were gonna do it early, but we will do it on January 28th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hearth. Uh, we'll move on to Fire Chief, Mr. Wilfer.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, all I have tonight is, uh, some, uh, service recognition anniversaries. Dick Muskic, forty-seven years, Jared McKeever, four years, and Bradley Seaworth, two years. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you all for your time and service. With that, thank you all for coming. I now will look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion been made and seconded by Mr. Zog. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.